The modern world of protecting.
Yeah, it's cool. It's not cool, but not.
Personally, I sweat.
This isn't.
It's good.
We're good. Okay, we'll call the Loudoun County Commission meeting to order for August 4th, 2025. First up is the public hearing. Jim Jenkins, come on up and tell us about the changes.
Thank you, commissioners. Items A through B will all be resolutions amending the zoning map of Loudoun County, Tennessee, pursuant to Chapter 7, 13-7-105 Tennessee Code Annotated. Item A will be rezoned from A2 Rural Residential District to A3 Developing Agricultural District. Loudoun County Tax Map 57, Parcel 27, located at 4535 Browns Road, Loudoun County, Tennessee, situated in Fort Legislative District, approximately two one acre lots. This was recommended.
Any comments? B.
Uh, this will be the rezon from A1 Agricultural Forest District to A2 Rural Residential District, Loudoun County Tax Map 45, Parcel 1303, located at 5449 Poshe Road, Loudoun County, Tennessee, situated in the Fort Legislative District. This was also recommended.
Comments? C.
This will be the rezon from A2 Rural Residential District to R1 Suburban Residential District, Loudoun County Tax Map 28, Parcel 3501, located at 3420 Parrish Drive, Loudoun County, Tennessee, situated in the Sins Legislative District, and was recommended.
Well, I've asked for some stuff from this individual.
Yes.
And I assume we have not received that yet.
We have not. He is aware, as I understand, he's going to work on getting that survey conducted to show that it can be divided, getting a source map to show that there can be a house placed on it with set.
Yes, we're going to table that one until, let's try next month.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
D.
Uh, this will be the rezon from A2 Rural Residential District to R1 Suburban Residential District, Loudoun County Tax Map 84, Parcel 59, located on McGee Road, Loudoun County, Tennessee, situated in 30 Legislative District. This was, uh, recommended. It's also, the access is on Highway 411 on the McGee Road.
Comments? E.
This will be the rezon from A1 Agricultural Forest District to A3 Developing Agricultural District, Loudoun County Tax Map 65, Parcel 120, located Washington Pike, Loudoun County, Tennessee, situated in the Fort Legislative District, approximately two acres on it, and this was recommended.
Comments? Okay, we'll vote on them in just a few moments. You'll come back.
Thank you.
Okay, I've asked Commissioner Shaver to open the meeting tonight with the pledge of prayer.
Who's pledge first?
My pledge is the life of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Thank you, Lord, for another day here to allow us to stay alive and move right along. Thank you so much for the little bit of rain we had. We'll take whatever you send us and we'll, we'll be happy for it. Be with all the families. We have some, some folks in our community with death in their families. Be with those families. Comfort them. Be with this body and help us to use some common sense when we're doing what we're doing as we represent our constituents and also always help us to represent you by through, by way of us. All these things we ask in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Tammy, call or roll.
Randolph.
Here.
James.
Here.
Jenkins.
Here.
Bowen.
Here.
Seiderfield.
Whitfield.
Here.
Owen.
Here.
Morrison.
Here.
Shaver.
Here.
Waller.
Present.
Next up is the adoption of the August 4th, 2025 County Commission agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda as written, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Shaver. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Quillen. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda is adopted. Next up is the reading and acceptance of the June 30th, 2025 Loudoun County Commission minutes.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve the minutes that were sent to us ahead of time so we could read through them.
Second.
Second by Commissioner.
James.
James. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next up is public comments for the public hearing. Sharon Cox.
Thank you, Commissioner and Chairman of the Commission. I'm nervous and I didn't think I would be. I've been to all three of these meetings, the first one, and a workshop. I am against the rezoning of A1 5449 to A2 Agriculture Residential. I really don't understand how, how do you determine who can re, come in and rezon something? They buy the property knowing that it's an A1 Agriculture and the restrictions, and then it's not what they want, so they come in and rezon it. I'm not understanding how it's determined, why it will be rezoned. How, how do you do that? And if that's, I don't understand that. And if that's possible, why have zoning laws at all? Why not just let anybody buy a property and come in and just, well, do whatever they want to? These are questions I had from both the other meetings. I also knew from the first meeting, then I was talking to a deaf ear, it was already approved or, or not approved, but already decided. I don't understand why. I also got a petition from the neighborhood with 16, actually 17 signatures on it. One of them I didn't get turned in. But the community don't want to be rezoned. I know that you don't have to go by what the community says, but everybody here is elected officials for the community, by the community, and I'm not saying that's not a threat. I'm just making a statement. I also had a receipt of a phone call that told me that he had talked to, or Commissioner had talked to some people on the list, and they said that, oh, they didn't know it was going to be four acres or four and a half acres, but you can't do that with that 12 acre track. You can only put four houses on there in, in your A2 zoning, according to the two and a half acres. I'd been threatened with more people going in there, or not threatened told, that they went in after they would rezon and put more houses in there because they could. Would that not be another reason for me not to want to be rezoned? But anyway, let me get back to my notes. And then after, how does this one person's wishes and wants overrule the people in the community? Please explain that to me. Explain to me why you can just pick, or this person comes up and puts up a, a petition to rezon and you just, you can just go ahead and rezon it. I don't understand how you come across or how anybody, how is it decided? I, I don't understand this. But anyway, after the workshop, I was told that this decision is final. Well, everything that I agreed, I can file an appeal. The community or I could take this to court, not you all, just the decision. And then I was told, go ahead, that our multi-million dollar lawyers or whatever is better than any lawyer that you can get. How do y'all know that? I, I don't understand that. Then when my kids were walking out with our Commissioner, he told the kids, if we don't rezon this, then they can sue the person that's wanting the rezoning. What's the difference? What's the difference in me suing or our community suing and this person that wants to rezon it? I don't understand. I really don't. Okay. And zoning two lots, agriculture two, it is agriculture residential. And like I said, four houses can be put on that unless it's 12 and a half acres, and I don't know if that's 12 and a half acres. I know it's 12 acres and five houses can be, but according to the agriculture, he has to have adequate water and service services. Am I the only one that reads these? Sorry, I didn't mean that. Then I was told that there was an A2 zoning in there with two houses on one and a half acres. Well, that's two mobile homes. The mobile homes can be moved. I mean, just saying. And that was done in 2004. I moved out there in 2005. This is affecting me. I mean, you know, it's right behind my house. I have said all along, I don't have any problems with complying with A1 zoning, one house per five acres, but to be honest with you, one house on a track is fine with me. But I've asked questions about, can this be done? Can this be divided up into four acres and three tracks? Because that's a skinny lot. I also asked about the zoning, the, asked about the road front.
Thank you.
Your thing stays 400 feet. There's 300 feet in front of there. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, well, I wasn't done, but anyway, thank you so much. And my main thing is, I have questions. Just answer my questions. How can this be done? What determines it? Thank you so much. I am so sorry.
No problem. Any comments?
I think I did tell five minutes.
All right. Rich Anken, you're up.
First off, I'd like to apologize for not having attended your workshops and committees over the last six or seven months. I wasn't able to, but I did follow a lot of them on YouTube. With respect to the 100,000 for the convenience center expansion, why are we doing that? And are you going to do a soil sample? From my understanding, the property that you want to do that on is toxic brownfield. And we're going to have people walk over a toxic brownfield? The second one is resolution to approve a tax on mineral service, separate service tax, separate tax. Does that mean that all of the quarries that are in the county have an extra tax? And if so, it's going to affect Loudoun County Solid Waste Committee because they get a lot of rocks through the road up there? And they're certainly going to pass it on to us.
You're talking about the mineral tax?
I'm sorry?
The mineral tax on rocks.
Well, does that include gravel? Nobody has. Okay. The last thing I'd like to bring to your attention, it's been quite a while since I've attended the Solid Waste Committee meeting. A lot has gone on there. And I'm going to ask Mr. Waller, when was the last time that he's updated this commission on what they're doing over there? There's some significant changes to the contract, to the operation, to the number of people on there. Two people were taken off because they weren't supposed to be on there, can't hold two positions at once. That should apply to Mr. Waller. There were TCAs, at least four of them, that addressed that topic, and I looked that up on C-Test. Kind of curious, it's been like this, but he hasn't advised Mr. Waller that he needs to go off one or the other. That's it.
Thank you. That concludes public comments. So Jim, come on back up and we'll vote on the changes.
So item A is the 4535 Browns Road, approximately two, one acre lots.
Next one, sure.
Say it.
Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Whitfield, second by Commissioner Shaver to approve. Any further comments? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. B.
This is the 5449 Poshe Road.
Um, I want to talk about this for, for just a second. I did go out in that community and talk to some of those folks. There is a lot down that's, that's already zoned A2, just right down from it. I did speak to the owner of this property. He has guaranteed me that it's going to be one house for 4.18 acres. They have to maintain all the setbacks from each lot, so he can't cluster those houses on one lot to, to do the rest. So they, it is going to be, I have asked him and would like to be put in the record, there is one lot that he could subdivide again. The, from, with the A2 to the two and a half, I've asked him if that is his intention. Of course, he, he tells me no, but I would like for it to be put in the, in the record that that would not be allowed. It's going to be three lots that, the four acre on 4.18 acres each. With all that said, I'll make a motion to approve.
Say it.
Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Whitfield to approve, second by Commissioner Shaver. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
See, it's the 3420 Parrish Drive, situated in the 6th Legislative District.
Going to make a motion to table or just table it? Motion to table one seat until next month?
Say it.
We got a motion by Commissioner Waller to table, second by Commissioner Shaver. Till next month?
Yes.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's tabled until next month.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item D is the McGee Road. This is situated in Fort Legislative.
Mr. Chairman, in the absence of Commissioner Seiderfield, I'm going to make a motion to approve this with the contingent said it will be Highway 411. It will be this developer and it will be this development, and if any of those change, it reverts back to its previous zoning. This is a standard practice we picked up under our new Article 5.
Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Shaver. Do we have a second?
Say it.
Second. Commissioner Randolph. Okay, and the changes are, it has to be on 411, and if the changes, it can't.
Or land the same developer, it's right, same development that's been submitted.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And E is the property in Washington Pike, situated in Fort Legislative District. Let's do English mark. Make a motion to approve.
Say it.
Who is the second?
Me.
Okay.
Me. Give it to Bill.
All right.
Don't feel bad anyway.
We got a motion by Commissioner Whitfield to approve, second by Commissioner James. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Mr. Quillen.
Yes. First of all, I would like to take this time to welcome Eagle Scout Bruin Webster and his parents, Mary and Mitch Webster, here tonight to be recognized. Bruin is from the Lenore City Troop 354, and I had the honor recently of attending the Eagle Scout Court of Honor. So I again want to congratulate Bruin on an incredible achievement that only a small percentage of Scouts ever reach. Earning the rank of Eagle Scout is a testament to your determination and your desire to make the world a better place. You face challenges led with purpose and giving back to your community in ways that will leave a lasting impact. May this just be the beginning of a lifetime of leadership, service, and success. I'm so proud of you and proud you're here tonight. We've got a couple of proclamations. I guess we'll go with State Representative Lowell Russell first.
I guarantee his is prettier than mine.
Thank you, Rosemary. Thank you, members of the commission. It's an honor to be here and appreciate Buddy giving me the opportunity to present this one with you, so thank you. Whereas it's a time when our nation's youth is faced with challenges, the Boy Scouts of America is one of the finest assets, providing young men and women with an educational program that contributes significantly to their character development, citizenship training, and improved mental and physical fitness, whereas the highest rank a scout can attain in the Boy Scouts of America program is that of Eagle Scout. And Brian Bruin Mitchell Webster, after a considerable effort and diligent preparation recently achieved rank of Eagle Scout, whereas Mr. Webster's Eagle Scout project greatly contributed to the betterment of his community and reflected the true spirit of volunteerism for his project, he reclaimed and restored a trail at Baylor School which had become inaccessible due to erosion. Whereas it's appropriate that we should recognize Bruin Webster as one of the most outstanding young people in our state. Now therefore, camera section, District of House, Representative 114 General Assembly of the State of Tennessee, at the conjunction with Representative Lowell Russell, we hereby proclaim that we honor and congratulate Bruin Mitchell Webster on becoming an Eagle Scout and extend to him our best wishes for every future success proclaimed in Nashville, Tennessee on August 1st, 2025. Congratulations.
Whereas BSA troop member Bruin Mitchell Webster, 354, and recognized by the Boy Scouts of America for successfully completing all requirements for scouting's highest rank. Whereas family and friends gathered on July 17, 2025, to honor Bruin Mitchell Webster and support him on the attainment of the rank of Eagle Scout, and to recognize the faithful and steady path taken within the scouting organization. Whereas scouting has been an integral part of our community as well as a positive influence for many years, and whereas we commend Bruin Mitchell Webster on his Eagle project, the reclamation, restoration of a trail at Baylor School in Chattanooga. Whereas Loudoun County recognizes that attainment of the Eagle Scout rank is neither easy nor common. Whereas Loudoun County wishes to recognize the great accomplishment of being an Eagle Scout, that now therefore, on this fourth day of August, the year of our Lord, 2025, Loudoun County everybody Bradshaw does wish to recognize the service, character, and accomplishment of Bruin Mitchell Webster to his community and wish to honor said accomplishment. Does recognize Eagle Scout Bruin Mitchell Webster Loudoun County and deem this proclamation to be forever recorded in the annals of Loudoun County history. Congratulations, gentlemen.
Mom, you can come here and take pictures.
Y'all want to come up here and take a picture? I promise.
If you work hard and stick with it, someday you can be a county commissioner like your fellow Eagle Scout.
Higher aspiration.
Who's first?
Go ahead, look at me.
One, two, three.
Nobody wants to look at you, Billy.
I do. Look at this little.
Mark Campbell and Billy, you all were part of. Mike and Billy. They went to church together. Rose played ball together.
Scrunching rolls, babe. Brett's sending the wire in for some reason.
Congratulations. Well done.
I've got the, I've got close enough, man. Do that.
Okay, Van Shaver.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, as we discussed in workshop about the consideration of any changes to our cluster option in our zoning development. Where's Jim? Jim's back there. And as everybody knows, Jim Jenkins got a busy, busy office. And the hope was that at some point, he'll take it to his planning commission, they'll review it, and they'll give some consideration whether or not we want to let the ponds be part of that. If they want to make changes, the percentages, that's on them. So my, my first motion will be that we send that request to planning commission to look at clusters. So I'll put that in the form of motion.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Shaver, second by Commissioner Waller to send a letter or motion.
Well, we're just, we're just telling Jim to take it to planning commission.
Okay. Telling Jim to take it to planning commission. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
The second part of this, Mr. Chairman, will be that as we've learned, I won't say from our stakes, but we've learned how the process works here over the last few years. Whenever we start considering changes to anything, we tend to have people come rushing in here and grab up applications and try to get approvals for things before changes are made. With that in consideration, I'm going to make a motion to also put a moratorium on any more cluster developments approvals until the planning commission comes back to us with a recommendation.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Shaver, second by Commissioner Waller to put a moratorium on cluster development. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
I'm voting no.
That we don't want.
Motion still carries, but I'm voting no.
Okay. Mr. Waller.
Gary, I'll let you, annexation interlocal agreement.
Oh, yes.
Because you've carried the water in this, and thank you very much.
So we were able to get with Mayor Bradshaw himself, were able to get with Bob Olin, Mayor Akins, and Mayor, the city attorney, Walter Johnson, to talk about the plan of services interlocal agreement for the city and the county for their annexation. services interlocal agreement for the city and the county for their annexation. We both did releases that allowed Bob Bowman to work on this with the city of Lenore City and Mayor Akins signed that release immediately. Mayor Bradshaw signed it. Bob has written this up. He has sent a copy to Mayor Akins and to their city council. We have a copy of this also. I'm going to recommend, this is the last piece of this annexation that they did, the need of this plan of services interlocal agreement. So seems like everybody has agreed or this body hopefully will agree to it today. I spoke with Mayor Akins this afternoon. He says that he's totally happy himself with it. He sees no issue whatsoever of getting this signed, so...
Well, it's... So we'll vote tonight and hopefully it passes because every noncontiguous annexation requires a plan of service interlocal agreement.
Correct.
So we'll pass it tonight and we'll go to Lenore City Council. They'll vote. The next meeting is the 11th.
11th.
And then from there, they'll sign it. We'll sign it. We'll have a interlocal agreement.
We'll have it done. So again, I spoke with Mayor Akins today. He said he would sign it today, but the way it's written, he can't sign it until after Lenore City Council approves it. So I'm going to make a motion that we agreed to sign, or agreed to allow the mayor to sign this agreement.
I'll second that.
So we can move on.
Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Whitfield, seconded by Commissioner Waller to approve the annexation procedure. Any further discussion?
This means that this agreement's for only this track.
That is correct.
So every noncontiguous, we have to have...
Correct, correct.
He's got to come back.
Mr. Chairman, all we've ever asked that is that they follow the law. Just do what the state law says to do, and that seems to be a problem sometimes. I want to thank Gary Whitfield. Without Whitfield, this didn't happen. Without the county attorney writing it, it didn't happen. I don't know why the city is so hesitant to want to do this, but it's here. Let's see if they vote for it and sign it. If it is, fantastic.
I don't think the city was hesitant. When I tried to work on it, Bob Bowman said it was a conflict of interest and I couldn't get anywhere. So, you know, with this being our district, we've tried to work on it. And like I said, we couldn't get past Bob Bowman.
Bob shouldn't have been working hard at all.
Well, but all of a sudden...
Wasn't his call.
All of a sudden, he's been able to do this and...
Well, we came up with the idea that if the city would honor a release to allow Bob...
Yes. I think you could have included us in that since this is our district. We appreciate that, but...
We were down to the crunch.
I understand. But yeah, I've talked with Mayor Akins throughout this process and he's fine with this interlocal agreement.
We'll see on the 11th.
Thank you for getting it done, Gary.
Any other comments? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Aaron, you're up next.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. All right, so Letter A is consideration of recommendation to approve or accept the following grant.
Motion approved A, 1 through 4.
Second. Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Waller, seconded by Commissioner James to approve Items A, 1 through 4. Since there's money involved, this is a roll call vote.
James?
Yes.
Jenkins?
Yeah.
Quillen?
Aye.
Switfield?
Yes.
Cullen?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Shaver?
Yes.
Waller?
Aye.
Randolph?
Yes.
Okay, the motion carries.
I'll make a motion to approve $100,000 for the convenience center expansion. And since Richard hasn't been here, I'll go far enough to say this has been discussed several times. All we're doing is expanding the footprint. We are not on the part of the railroad property that ever had a problem, so let's put that to rest. That was way down the far end. They've mitigated all that. We now have a lease with the railroad company. They wouldn't lease it to us if it wasn't fine. All we're doing is making a larger area for the vehicles, the convenience of the convenience center to be able to come in and out. So that's a motion to approve that transfer of $100,000, and it may be more because we're going to hopefully put another compactor in there where we can really improve the convenience of the convenience center.
I'll second your motion.
Okay.
Just the record too, services are not changing, still the same. We're not taking anything extra. It's going to be the same stuff we take now, just we've got more face proof.
Make it easier to get in and out.
Is it not to exceed?
No, sir.
Not to exceed $100,000?
No, it is not. I'm not making that motion. The first $100,000 is what we're moving. It may be a quarter million dollars time we get done, but this gets a start. It won't, but it's a good number. I'll let the compactor $50,000.
We'll give them something to write about.
The what?
We'll give them something to write about.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Shaver, seconded by Commissioner Whitfield to approve $100,000 for the convenience center expansion in Lenore City. Money involved, call a roll, Tammy.
Jenkins?
Yes.
Quillen?
No.
How can you vote against everything? I'm sorry. I take... Never mind.
Okay, hold on.
Take it back.
Whitfield?
Yes.
Cullen?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Shaver?
Absolutely, yes.
Waller?
Aye.
Randolph?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Letter C is consideration of recommendation to approve a resolution increasing the mineral severance tax.
And that's a nickel, right?
It is five cents per ton.
Okay.
When does that take effect?
July 1st, 2025, if it passes. And it goes through 2030. And then Billy and I have been in communication, then another resolution has to be done for another five cents per ton.
Yeah, entertain a motion. I'll entertain a motion. Two.
I tell you what, I'd ask Billy Pitbull to come up and just kind of give us the details on this. He did it at Budget Committee. Everybody hasn't heard of this. Billy, would you come up and give us the details on it?
Sounds like 1984 again. In 1995, the county commission approved the original 15 cent mineral severance tax, set it a cap at 15 cents. I'm asking today because of new legislation that was just passed recently to the General Assembly. Charlie Baum carries the bill on the House side of things. He's laid it out here. And a lot of the dialogue that went along with the different committees that he went through to get this to the House floor was the fact that inflation, and of course, we all deal with that. But the fuel revenues have been flat for about five years now. We're not gaining any more revenue from our fuel. Our revenues have flattened. And one of our major sources of revenue. This would allow for us here in Loudoun County, going off of last year's numbers, about $40, something thousand dollars additional revenues for the highway department if we could pass this nickel increase. We have marked our calendars because I started looking for the original resolution, which has been referenced in the new resolution. The General Assembly allowed this back in the early, early 80s. It was originally a meeting with Budget Committee by the Department of Defense. It was tabled for one month and then tabled again and then come back up for 10 years. Loudoun County just got on a lot of revenues for 10 years that the highway department had borrow money to make improvements. I would appreciate y'all to consider voting for this to be able to increase our revenues, be able to provide the county better roads.
Thank you, Bill. And it's a long drawn out process, right? I mean, it's going to have small increments as time goes?
Well, it is. There's a tier, 2030 to 20 cents. If we should decide to come again in 2030, we can raise it another nickel. It makes us out in 2035. And as far as the date goes, there was an amendment put on this bill that passed with the bill that in 60 days had to receive a copy. I don't know if you've noticed that or not. So there's a little bit of time. And the old resolution, it was also included, for some of y'all may wonder, the agriculture is exempt from this. There's a couple of provisions in there in that resolution that exempts certain things. Do we know what those exemptions are? Like lime? There's several different.
Was the exemptions in the original resolution or in the...
It was in 1995. Section 4 of that resolution said, "I've included under this text are the following: Any lime or limestone used for agricultural purposes, any limestone used for pollution control or vapor purposes, any lime, dehydrated lime, any lime or limestone used for manufacturing cement, glass, fiberglass, rubber, paper, filler, paint, chow, petty, roofing, rock dust, so on and so forth." I can continue if you'd like.
Any further questions? I'll entertain a motion. Second time, anybody want to make a motion?
Billy, you're planning on using this money for roads improvements? Absolutely, in asphalt. In asphalt. I'll make a motion for we're going to use it in asphalt.
Where does the money come from? Who pays it? Well, I guess what I'm asking... The mine has to pay a certain amount for every ton that comes out. And then as was mentioned, I'm sure that's just passed on into the cost of the gravel and stuff. But every quarry we have everywhere has to pay a mineral severance tax. And I think there's stuff besides quarries, any kind of mining, any kind of operation. If they take anything out of the ground, they have to pay a per ton tax on it now. This is just allowing the highway department to go up on it if they want to.
The price of gravel is outrageous as it is.
It is. Minute, but at this point, I mean, it's like getting three tons of gravel, you're adding 15 cents. And if we can take that money, if we can take an additional $40,000 a year with the revenue in asphalt...
You can't pay nothing, $40,000.
I know, but it'll add to...
I'm going to be honest.
I mean, we're at the point now where our revenues are low on our asphalt we need. We've got to continue to pay for it. We were fortunate this year with our money. We were able to put an additional $3.5 million in the road paper. That's not going to be here anymore.
Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Whitfield. We need a second. Anyone want a second Commissioner Whitfield's motion? Okay, going once, going twice, going three times. Motion fails.
So. I said so. I didn't say second. I said so.
I know what you said.
You second it?
No.
Okay, then motion fails and for lack of a second. Go ahead.
Letter D is consideration of recommendation to approve an increase in the amount of $4,200 in the highway department for truck drivers' wages. Now, this is actually being moved from another line. It says increase, but I just want to make you aware, they requested it to come from vehicle trade.
Make a motion to approve that, Mr. Chairman.
Second. Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Shaver to approve the transfer of $4,200 in the highway department budget for truck drivers' wages, seconded by Commissioner Waller. Any further discussion? Tammy, call a roll.
Whitfield?
Yes.
Cullen?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Shaver?
Yes.
Waller?
Aye.
Randolph?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Jenkins?
Yes.
Quillen?
Aye.
Okay.
All right. Letter E is consideration of recommendation to approve an additional amount of $168,000 for 24-hour nursing care at the jail.
Our motion we approve.
Second. Okay, hang on. We got a motion by Commissioner Whitfield to approve, seconded by Commissioner Quillen.
I just have one question. This is for a nurse on staff 365 days a year, 24/7?
Correct.
Yes. Right now, we have like...
Unless...
Well, since... Go ahead.
Well, we just found out in budget this last time. I support this. I will vote for this.
Yeah.
But I think going forward, are we over a half million dollars now for this service?
This will make the budget $588,000.
Half a million.
How many nurses could we hire for that?
But you have like three staffs running...
I understand that.
Well, there's other things that come along with it, too. It's the... I mean, yeah, you could staff them and employ by us.
I support that just a little higher.
Yeah, yeah, well, I get it, but it's... Prescription department is too? No, prescriptions is a second line. They do go through turnkey and, you know, that's something else to discuss, but it's a separate line. This is essentially just for the contract for medical.
And that's an increase over last year?
They provide everything. There's an actual MD that signs off on most of everything as well. So you have your nurses there to evaluate, give out medicine, you know, overnight, you have corrections deputies giving out medicine, which is... Yeah, I know, I know.
I support this 100%.
I think it would be more expensive to staff nurses and your liability would be higher if we essentially employed them ourselves rather than going...
And we have to buy all the equipment that those...
Yeah.
They need to...
So this is to a third party staffing?
It is, turnkey.
Okay.
How much is this increase over 24, 25?
Last year, the budget was $300,000.
So...
So $388,000.
Better than a quarter million dollars, but we're going from eight hours, 12 hours?
It was around eight hours and then it was very limited on the weekends as well. Nothing overnight.
Well, I'm for it. It's just, that's a lot of money.
It is. I agree. It is.
Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Whitfield, seconded by Commissioner Quillen to approve an additional $168 for 24-hour nursing care at the jail. Any further discussion? Call a roll, Tammy.
Whitfield?
Yes.
Cullen?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Yes.
Waller?
Aye.
Randolph?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Jenkins?
Yes.
Quillen?
Aye.
Hey, that motion carries. You got your help.
Letter F is consideration of recommendation to approve adding one full-time and dissolving two.
Make a motion to approve that request, Mr. Chairman. Second.
Seconded by Commissioner James. Motion made by Commissioner Shaver, seconded by Commissioner James.
And what... I mean, we asked that prices for D and E. How much is that going to cost us additionally per year?
So the request is to dissolve through part-time positions and to take that $46,737 and move it to the full-time line to add the full-time...
Let's not really do that.
It's move it from part-time to full-time.
Got it. Thank you.
Sure, we'll move it forward.
Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Shaver, seconded by Commissioner James to dissolve two part-time positions at the convenience center for one full-time. Any further discussion? Tammy, call a roll.
Cullen?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Shaver? Shaver?
Yes.
Waller?
Aye.
Randolph?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Jenkins?
Yeah.
Quillen?
Aye.
Sir, or Whitfield?
Motion carries.
Letter G is...
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. Okay, hang on. Motion by Commissioner James to approve G, which is to increase the caller for the rest of the employees, seconded by who did this?
Randolph.
By Commissioner Randolph.
Now, before you vote, I need some clarification. And I apologize for doing this because I didn't do it in Budget Committee, so I just need some clarification on this. The assumption when this was put into the budget amendments that you saw within the spreadsheets that are posted online, takes these things into consideration, and I just want to make sure and verify that these are what are applied to these increases. And this will assume that all full-time employees that were hired June 30th or prior and are still employed will receive this.
I would say that's absolutely correct.
Okay.
That's correct.
And that this does not include any elected or appointed employees with state-based wages.
Correct.
Okay. I just want that to be clarified.
And are they getting backpaid back to July 1?
Yes.
Yes. Okay.
Any further discussion? There's a motion by Commissioner James, seconded by Commissioner Randolph, to approve the increase. Tammy, call a roll.
Morrison?
Yes.
Shaver?
Yep.
Waller?
Aye.
Randolph?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Jenkins?
Yes.
Quillen?
Aye.
Whitfield?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes. Motion carries.
All right. Letter H is consideration of recommendation to approve amendments or line adjustments in the following votes.
Mr. Chairman, given that we've heard this at the Budget Committee, we heard this at workshop, I'll make a motion. We approve H1 through 5 unless Ms. Rice has a complaint.
That's good.
Second. Seconded by Commissioner James. It's to approve 1 through 5 under H. Any other discussion? Tammy, call a roll.
Shaver?
Yes.
Waller?
Aye.
Randolph?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Jenkins?
Yes.
Quillen?
Aye.
Whitfield?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes. Motion carries.
All right. And letter I is distribution of the following reports. It was the approved Budget Committee minutes in... Actually, you can read these three. These three were included in the packet that were distributed online and sent to you in an email by Ms. Waller.
A motion to say thank you to Ms. Rice?
What?
I was just thanking her.
Well, thank without a motion, okay.
Okay, you're welcome. It's unnecessary, but thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Waller?
Motion to approve all the bond and notaries under the...
Second. Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Waller to approve the bonds and notaries, seconded by Commissioner Shaver.
Most adjourned.
Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Now eliminate.
Most adjourned.
Wait, wait, one second.
Wait a minute.
I did get a copy of the pilot that I'll send out. The pilot was based, we were going to see IDB. I did have a chance to...
A what?
A pilot agreement.
For what?
For what?
Lower City Battery Company or...
The IDB building?
I think that's where it is. I have it, but I'll send it out. I will get a need to scan.
So we give away more tax?
We did. No, we did not.